Good evening, it's seven oh five, we call the regular meeting of the Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen to order. Apologize for the delay. Our first item of business is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. Marie, would you like to make a speech? I do have an added agenda item, if we could, like to add a special with Linda Collins pertaining to the small city block grant under a new business. If we can add it as agenda item nine K, but we'll try and take that out of order so that she's not here till we leave.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We have a brief agenda tonight, so we'll just get it, we're not getting it rolling. Our first, our next item is the approval of meeting minutes from March ninth. During your pack, I press everyone to have a chance to review them. Any motions or corrections?
Make a motion to take up the ninth, March ninth, two thousand twenty-three Board of Selectmen Special Meeting at the Center.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, I'll ask again, any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Still carried. Uh, March twenty-third, special meeting.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes from March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Still carried. Public participation, are there any members of the public who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? So, uh, please raise your hand, state your address, state your business, and I'll offer the same opportunity to anybody who's online. Is there anybody here? Who would like to address the board? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Will you share the plus screen? Uh, what's gonna happen with the more central, this can be helped as far as corrections? Still have nothing to explain where my set system lies. On multiple pieces of property, they have nothing to help in it. The only help I got was the guy to put it in. Like, I kinda helped him do that, so. What are we gonna do?
So, I'll be happy to address that with you privately, privately online.
Okay.
Don't let me forget about it. Any other comments from members of the public? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
I'm Buckley Kingscourt. One quick question, is this coming in all later?
Uh, this is gonna be a very long meeting, but not solely because of that. Alright, this is one end, it's one of the break, I saw this one kinda act. Any other comments from members of the public? Is there anyone else who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen?
Hi Jason, Maureen Farmer, two forty-seven Southwater Street. I just wanted to, um, thank you all for your persistence and your foresight in continuing to go down that road to get that community center approved. It would have been real easy for you all to just kind of back away from it after its first fail and thankfully you worked together as a wonderful group of people who truly have our best interests at heart. And again, congratulations and thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you ma'am. There anyone else would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? Seeing none, uh, there will be another opportunity later on in the meeting. Uh, the first thing is there's a, or the next thing is there's an invitation to you all to attend the Memorial Day Celebration at, I'll, I can wait. The Memorial Day Celebration at the Melrose Schoolhouse, that's gonna be on May twenty-eighth at two thirty in the afternoon. Um, there is a, a very brief parade, or rather a very short parade, um, that precedes the ceremony. It's a really nice ceremony, I think everybody's been at, at least, you know, some years or not every year. Um, if you're around, they'd certainly love to have us there. I don't have any resignations. We do have some reappointments, but I'm gonna ask that, um, we postpone nine B one through six until after we take up agenda item nine A. Um, so that we can reestablish the, the committee and then, uh, name the members to the newly reestablished committee. So I'd like to ask a motion to postpone agenda items seven B one through six until later in the meeting.
I move to postpone agenda item B one through six until later in the meeting. And take up agenda item nine A, is that what we're doing or no?
Uh, just, just.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Table.
This table, thank you.
I'll second that.
Vote has been made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Uh, nine, I'm sorry, seven B seven, uh, the actually I'm gonna ask that we postpone that, cause that's, that's supposed to be for an alternate number, there's a, a regular number that's supposed to be listed, so if we could just postpone that until the next meeting, please.
Make a motion to post, right? B seven, was he fell over, probably, missed in front into, uh, next meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We do have a new appointment, it's a new name, a new resident in town who's interested in serving on the planning and zoning commission. I think that's great. Um, her resume and, uh, application were included in the packet. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Um, I would ask that we postpone this until our next meeting. I did reach out to Ms. McKenna and I did have a few questions, but I haven't heard back from her yet, so I would just like to get some answers to my questions before I vote.
Sure, that's the interview.
Thank you. Go ahead, bring your name on, Facebook, do you want?
I did not.
The John, that popped up, Renatus, on there was one's law.
Okay.
I'm sure if he were, if he says he is, but yeah.
So, voting to pu- uh, postpone until April twentieth would be in order.
Move to postpone agenda item, um, seven C one until our next meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Um, unfinished business, the Blight Ordinance. Ken and Ruth, Ruth and Ken, however you guys would like to do this.
You can do it, Ken. I'll second. Alright, in the packet. You find, I, it's the alternative, April fourth, twenty twenty-three. Blight. Property Maintenance Ordinance, that is a combination of the alternative, um, document that was reviewed at the last meeting. Um, Selectman Nordele's purpose statement that he presented. And, um, there's also a clean and a mock-up version of the preceding, uh, version of the Blight Ordinance before we brought the alternate to the table at the last meeting. So, this alternate that stated April fourth has, it's kind of a sandwich, it has new text from Selectman Nordele. It has the applicability from the original draft that we were going over. The definitions come from the, uh, alternate version that was presented at the last meeting. With the change, we took out the automobile section, so that, uh, Blight had A through E and now it's A through D because we took the that piece out that's covered under the zoning regulations. And then, um, the rest of it continues on with the previous with the alternate language. One thing that is not included in here that I would like to add is at the end a notation, um, change five one to be enforcement process. And that would read, the enforcement of this ordinance will lead here to the memorandum of law prepared by four Ruth and Calixter, by Brian McCann. Date of February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two regarding Blight enforcement process. And what that is, there's a table that has all the authorization statutes. And then it's just kind of a, this is the flow of going through that process. So I wanted to make sure that we, um, cited that, and then that would make the effective date section six dash one. And then I just said I have a little bit of formatting to push, and push words to the right margin. So, happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions or comments?
I was, um, ready to go, I can I go first?
Right off, go ahead.
Uh, I like the direction that it's going in now. Um, I just have a comment on, um, the second page, Blight under B where it says accumulation of junk on the property. Um, to me, I don't like the word junk because someone's might see something as junk and someone might not, is there another word we could use there like? Some sort of garb, like, I, I don't know, I just don't like junk. I think it's not specific enough.
Or what word are you?
And then on the third page, three dash two D, um, I was just where it says that there will be a separate fund to be used for expenses related to the enforcement maintenance of Blight within the town, um, what are some examples of the related expenses and who approves that or manages that fund? Would that go through the Board of Finance as well, or is that within the department?
That'll be through the Blight Prevention Office.
Okay. The, um, citation that there are fines.
Mm-hmm.
Would go into a special fund that would be used to service if we needed to step in and clean something up or
Okay.
You know, repair something.
Okay.
It would be cool from there. Okay, thank you.
In that same section, uh, three dash two C, um, the appointment of the, uh, Blight Officer, I don't think it should rest in the first selectmen, I think that should rest in the board of selectmen, that's why I just like to and that provides at least some check that is not, you know, at, at one person's discretion, which has come up on a number of points. Um, and I did notice it's, now it says one or more, uh, the hearing officers or like that, yeah. That's all I got?
Yes.
Charlie?
Okay, so I just want to be clear on exactly what it is we'd be submitting for a town vote. Would it just be this new alternative section and it wouldn't include any of this other stuff? Definitions or those, because we've eliminated.
From the previous version?
Yeah.
This is the, the four pages, the standalone.
Okay, and then what about? So the procedure as far as um, citations, hearings, and fines, that's gonna be like an addendum type?
Yes.
Okay.
Briefly explained in here as you saw.
Yes.
Then the memo that our town attorney have here is really a guidance that tells us what statutes we're writing.
Exactly.
We're adhering to, and then it is like a helpful, here's the process and who you'd be doing what when, so that we meet those statutes.
Right. And I like that idea because then if something in the statute changes, we can change it without having to change this portion. Okay, o- other than that, and what Sarah pointed out, I, I'm very happy with it, um. I, junk is, um, it is a vague word, um, but I don't know how else to describe.
And I started to clip through the old version to see if we had so many definitions.
I think there was a definition, definition of junk, good point.
I mean, I
I might have been one of the other, you know, spell it out.
Isn't that correct for rubbish? Rubbish, debris.
Debris, huh?
Maybe you show them to under motor vehicles.
Yeah, oh, that's really cool. And maybe it should be debris slash
Waste or
Waste or rubbish?
I don't know.
But yeah, I'm very happy with this.
Okay. What do we, you just changed it to bulk accumulation?
Bulk accumulation?
For bulk accumulation of what?
Cause we, what, what, bulk accumulation of anything, what would be good? Well, the source is
Bricks.
Yeah, some things in bulk aren't bad things.
Bricks would be a good thing, okay? Could be. Why?
Cause it might build a wall, it could be, I'm just
Well, I mean, the other section does say, uh, you would, you know, you could have things that you wanna keep, so you could have a pile of scrap that, you know, that's money for you, right? But you can't have it in your front yard for more than, I forget how long. So that's kinda covered, right?
Yeah.
You know? You're gonna have a pile of scrap, okay, fine, put it in the backyard, I can live with that. Or whatever your, what treasure might be.
Bricks.
Bricks.
You don't want bricks?
No.
Unless they're bricks of gold, no.
My only comments, I, I gotta say, Charlie, your change that went at the beginning just changes the whole tone, it, I think it's great, and that was an excellent add, that's besides the stuff you guys have added on tonight, that I'm good with it. Right?
I think, I find love it.
I, I wanna just add on to, um, Alice' comment, I also give Ruth and Ken a lot of credit for, uh, their patience with that through the process that has now gone on for thirteen months. Um, but you guys have hung in there and, and really have gotten a product that I think we're happy with.
I am impressed with your patience.
I failed for you.
So, uh, do you guys have, are there specific corrections that need to be made, or, or are we happy to move this along?
I mean, I would like another word in place of dog, so personally, but I have written down debris slash rubbish.
I'm, I'm okay with that replaced.
And then I read the change that I had suggested for the enforcement process and pointing to it.
Mm-hmm.
In the Board of Selectmen, instead of first selectmen, I'm pointing
Yeah. Those changes, I'm good. Wanna make a one? What would that be?
Yeah, please don't move the table.
What would that be?
Uh, to, uh, accept the draft ordinance, uh, with the corrections noted and forward to a town meeting.
Okay. I'll move to accept the Paty's Windsor, um, Blight and Property Maintenance Draft Ordinance and move it to a town with the changes. And move it to a town meeting.
Aye. This document with the changes that, that have been identified, uh, accept it, move it to a town meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Well, that was easy.
Thank you guys for hanging in there.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that gets us to agenda item nine A, we have a guest tonight, Mr. Conway, uh, is here from, uh, Rise Up for the Arts. Um, it's an area nonprofit that he started, um, I'm gonna invite him to come up and tell us a little bit about, Debbie, please join, join to, Mike. Tell us a little bit about what Rise Up is, what's your, um, recommendation to run us?
Yeah, thank you, uh, so I run Rise Up for Arts, it's a not-for-profit here in Connecticut, and our mission is to empower communities to imagine new possibilities through public art and education. And we do that through a community inclusive working with local community members, leveraging our expertise in public art to really elevate the, the community. So working with, uh, Dad and the East Windsor Arts and Culture Commission, we did our first mural at the Trolley Museum, um, last fall, all privately funded, so what we do is also help on a kind of fundraising strategy side. We've completed over a million dollars of public art projects in Connecticut, and most of those are privately funded projects with partnerships with communities, so we'll do match funding campaigns, and the town may put up fifty percent of the project, and then we'll, we'll work with the private community to raise the other fifty percent. Um, and we're also in the schools, uh, we really believe in including youth in these projects and creating workforce pathways, whether it's through internships or volunteer opportunities. So we're here really just to ask for a more formal partnership with the town, um, to continue this work. Uh, my, Rise Up and the East Windsor, um, Arts and Culture Commission have had kind of a, a non-formal, um, arrangement where, you know, if there's a public art project, I'd be always on the phone chatting about it, strategizing about it, however I can help, um, but this really kinda qualifies it, um, the nuances, you know, we are a nonprofit, so we're gonna commit to, um, you know, a, a town to really work with. There is a percentage of every project that would go back into our nonprofit to continue our work. We're not asking for any money upfront till I get started and do this, but that's just a little kind of transparency, um, in the process. So, we're really here just to ask for the, the town's support over the next year. Any public art project that the community wants to do will work in partnership with the East Windsor Arts and Culture Commission to, uh, make happen. Um, so happy to answer any questions, or Debbie, if you wanna add anything.
I was just gonna say, you know, um, the Arts and Culture Committee started off small, and I think we slowly um, surely started to gain some steam and people are starting to recognize us and see our works around town, and so I think to continue momentum and to do bigger and better things on a more, um, consistent base basis, it makes sense to partner with, um, an establishment like Rise Up because that can only help us moving forward. We can only do so much on our own.
Yeah. Um, and I did confirm, Jason, that, uh, Sustainable CT can match funds for projects in East Windsor too.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Questions or comments?
Well, since we did just go through our budget here, um, is there money budgeted for this when there is an expense that's needed in the next fiscal year?
It's, it's not in our budget, but they, they fundraise privately too, as was the case with, uh, the mural at the Trolley Museum as a example.
So, I don't know what the budget is, but say the Arts and Culture Commission you know, decided to put two thousand dollars towards a five thousand dollar project, you know? You know, does a percentage of that go back to Rise Up in some way, like hard to tell, cause we're also raising the additional three thousand to actually make the project happen, so um, I don't think there's any particular line item for, like, Rise Up in that budget.
Yeah, I just asked, cause Arts and Culture has a budget that they submitted to us, and we're going through the process now, so I didn't know if there was money budgeted for you.
No, we're like coming in to like try and put money on top of what's already been, been budgeted.
You have programming dollars that are in the budget though.
I mean, yeah, being said, any of the, um, projects that we put forward in the budget that we just presented to you um, could, could be a partnership with Rise Up.
So like what we've seen in, um, you know, other towns, the town may put up that matching donation, right, and then we go out into the community to try and raise that other fifty percent, so it's more like seed money for projects that we're a part of than, like, East Windsor Arts and Culture, just paying Rise Up to do this project in and of itself.
And then you, when you do that, when you do the private, so, when you do the private fundraising component of that, just like with the Trolley Museum mural, it does not touch our books.
Correct, yeah, we're up five oh one C three, tax deductible, that whole thing, so we can take care of all of that. The other benefit too, like pretty much all the mural artists in the state are, are pretty like W nine with us and in our payroll system. So a town doesn't even have to worry about, you know, paying artists, buying the supplies, like, we have accounts at Sherwin-Williams, Gary's Artarama, all the bigger, you know, big art stores, so really helps just kind of streamline the process. Um, and because we're responsible for most of the murals in the state, I know the artist's schedule and can pick and pull, like, artists that can actually deliver on a project in a timeline. Um, versus, you know, a lot of times people are trying to reach these artists, but they're so busy that they just can't, so it's a quick text message for us.
Right, and Matt already knows the aesthetic of the artists that he's working with, so, you know, for the Trolley Museum, he thought Heather would be perfect for it, and it turned out she was. So, um, we tried to get another project going at the Broadbrook Garage, we were gonna have like this graffiti type mural on the side of, um, on this retaining wall. Um, that hasn't happened, but Matt had a specific artist in mind for that, so he can, you know, pair up the artist with the artwork and the location.
Yeah, cause it, not every art, or artist is like made the same, some are good abstract work, so if you know, we want a more abstract design, there's a certain number of artists that specialize in that. We've just done a lot of that homework and relationship building, um, in the community.
You know, I think at that point in time, the discussion had also been the whatever the gas station is right off of exit forty-five.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so Sarah raised a good point, kind of on a sidebar here, that the Trolley Museum, Broadbrook Garage, and even that, that gas station are all on private property, is the intention to do this on private property, public property, or wherever you can?
It's a good blend to do it in both, with both places, in our opinion, um, the private properties sometimes have a little bit less bureaucracy and approvals and that kinda stuff, and it's a, a phone call to the building owner. Um, the one on the gas station is a little more complicated, the gas station approved it. Um, we actually got, uh, approved by Sustainable CT for match funding, but we couldn't get a hold of the actual property owner, um, to get approval, so that like kinda went, went to the wayside, but would love to get that going again, because that can be a real landmark, um, for East Windsor, uh, cause it was gonna be a really cool East Windsor themed, like, welcome to East Windsor type of mural.
So in that case though, you'd be dealing with the property owner, right, you wouldn't be coming to the town for matching funds because it's private property.
So, a situation like that, a lot of times these property owners don't like, it's hard enough to get a yes from them just to put a mural on, so a lot of times they're not sometimes they do, right, so we do a lot of projects with a property owner, we'll put some money in, um. When we first went out to do that project, uh, we actually weren't planning on asking the town for any money. Um, we were gonna use matching funds with Sustainable CT and just private dollars like we did for the, the Trolley Museum.
Yeah.
But for the Broadbrook Garage, the owner of that property was gonna pay for the whole thing.
Yeah.
Himself.
You know the artist that did the opera house?
Yes, I do, he actually lives right down the street from me.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, we actually, we're gonna be doing that project, um, uh, we had a contract to do it first, but, uh, different, sorry.
So what obligation if they, this goes through and it continues and there is no funding or there isn't a party that materializes over the next year, there's no penalties or any charges?
No, no, no. No. I'm, you know, I'm born and raised here in Connecticut, like, I have a ton of pride in this state, I've been to other cities and I want Connecticut to be just as beautiful, just as vibrant, just as, you know, great as all the other states, and, um, you know, people say, oh, you guys are doing innovative stuff, I, and I always respond, no, we're just behind in this type of kinda community engaged public art, you go in a lot of other places, it, it's everywhere. Um, and there's a lot of power to it, you know, we've had thousands of volunteers come out for this, thousands of kids you know, in communities coming out to paint it, so it's, it's a lot bigger than just an artist comes and paints a mural, it's community pride.
But I had the opportunity to visit Louisville, Kentucky about a year ago, and they have tons of this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's I'm
Yeah. Yeah.
But I mean, I, I, I've seen that in more urban settings, certainly, actually just coming off of exit thirty-two in Hartford, there's a great one of, uh, four, four, uh, significant women in, in the Women's Empowerment Movement.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's Michelle Obama.
RGB.
R, RBG. Uh,
Judge Sotomayor.
Of course.
Yeah. Yep.
So there's no specific ask here, it's just, uh,
Yeah, I guess the ask is, you know, to commit to working with us, you know, for the next year, um, one thing, you know, I, I would not like to see is like we build this great infrastructure here, get a lot of energy going, and it's like oh, we don't need Rise Up anymore, even though, you know, we really helped get the, the movement going in town and did a lot of the legwork, so it's really just asking for, you know, a, a real partnership rather than, um, kind of a one-off thing like we have now.
And the Arts and Culture Commission can't enter into the contract, they're all, they need to do it to us.
Right, but I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm, I mean, I like the idea, and I'm just struggling Right, but I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm, I mean, I like the idea, and I'm just struggling with what like. Like, it's hard to say yes to something that's kind of ephemeral, like we're saying yes to the philosophy that if there's gonna be a project. We're willing to help. But it depends on the project, right?
Yeah, I think that's true.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what I'm saying yes to, is what I'm saying, you know?
It was not only that, we don't have the contract for it either, so.
I did send something, I guess, no, I have sent something that you can sign on the dotted line.
This is what they have, but.
Yeah, yeah.
It is Charlie, to Charlie's point, it's not a contract.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
That sense?
Yeah.
Um, it's a. It's a scope of work.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'd say yes to the idea.
Yeah.
Right, and and like, I think I'm interested in exploring this, but there's nothing to improve yet. Right?
Have you have you signed these agreements in other communities?
Yeah, yeah, well, project by project, we've done like bid waiver stuff, um, I'll pull up an example for like in Hartford.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, with the board's indulgence, uh, Matt, maybe you and I can work on actually what's something to be template appropriate.
Yeah, yeah.
Would look like.
Cool.
I I would say we're gonna meet again in in two weeks, which we are, but the next meeting is gonna be very brief, so I can put it on that. Um, we have a a very lengthy personnel thing that we're gonna do most of the next meeting, so it'd be. You and I need to be on the same page by about May second.
Fine, fine.
All right, cool.
All right. Thanks, yeah, thank you everyone, thank you, see ya.
No, cuz I'm gonna bring it back. Um, okay, so. Returning to the. In order of the agenda, um, I'd like to take up agenda item nine A. Um, the discussion renewal of the Arts and Culture Committee. Um, when we impaneled them, they were given an eighteen month charge, that charge is set to expire. Um, so we need to, if we, if it's the role of the board, we need to. Uh, re-up them for an additional eighteen months, um, under the same charges as before. And then, um, assuming that passes, we can go back to the reappointments and reappoint the membership. Clear as mud?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion that we go back in order and take item number. Seventy B.
No, we need, we need to reconstitute the commission. We don't have anything to point them to otherwise.
I'll make a motion that. We renew the Arts and Culture Committees, um. Moving forward. For a term of another eight, uh, for a term of eighteen months.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, uh, we could return to items seven B, one through six.
If no one minds me taking them all as one motion.
Go ahead.
I'll move to reappoint Deborah Williams, Christine Posniak. Russell Williams, Sheriff Hoya, Karen Stavalone and Bernard Duffy to the Arts and Culture Committee. All as regular members for terms expiring October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Reappointments are so ordered.
If anybody hasn't seen it, they've been working on the um, base school. Um, yeah, it's very cool, um, yeah, the pride, and today they were working on the actual. I wanna call it the head of the mascot, um, doing it, and if you go online, there's some cute pictures of somebody standing there with a towel on their shoulder. To reach up to top arms, so um, if you get a chance, take a ride through there. It's worth taking a look at.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, next run, agenda item nine C. Um, so you guys are aware that there have been some changes in emergency management. Um, especially during this interim period while we're filling out the search for a new police chief. Uh, Chief Hart has made the recommendation that uh Matt Carl, who has been acting um. Pretty in a pretty involved capacity as the the number two person in the E M. Um, be awarded a stipend of three hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents of pay period. Uh, and that Gail Corollis, who has taken over the um administrative functions that was previously done by. A police department employee, um, receive a five hundred dollar stipend. Um, those are the recommendations from Chief Hart, um, I will tell you that we are having more in-depth conversations around uh E M. At least amongst the the three of us, uh, that has happened previously, uh, like in the totality of my time. Um, and we're starting to think about things like preparing for active shooter trainings um in town buildings and in schools. Uh, so that if we see. Circumstances like that, all of our emergency services will have drilled on how to respond to that uh in a collaborative way. Um, that's just kind of an overview, but uh Chief Hart approached approached me with the recommendation, I support it, um, and just bring it to you guys for your consideration.
So just for clarification, pay change um for Matt Carl is my included stipend and the. Five hundred is the stipend for just winning a grand quarter one time, thank you, um. Stipend for her.
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That money's already budgeted.
Oh, yeah, um, we we will likely continue Gail's uh beyond the fiscal year.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Um, and then the.
Yeah.
How how the E M Director and Deputy Director shake out, it's kind of remains to be seen, what what we're taking things in sequence, police chief first and. Backfilling those positions as as necessary or, you know, considering reconfiguration.
You know, motion, please. Okay, I'll move to approve and allow for selectmen to sign the payroll status change form for. Emergency management to Matt Carl. Um, for pay change to three eighty-four sixty-two on a bi-weekly stipend basis. Uh, for emergency acting deputy director of emergency management.
Sorry, sorry.
Second.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's fine.
Uh, Charlie, Ben Al, any further discussion? And your your motion is for one of them or both of them?
I just made it for that, cuz I think it's separate, I'm honest.
Any further discussion?
And at some point, that title may or may not change.
Yeah.
And then this would be coming along with it.
Right.
Okay, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's not well applied, we can change it anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll move to approve and allow for selectmen to sign the payroll status change. Form for Gail Corollis. For uh five hundred dollars, one-time stipend for emergency management grant coordinator.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I was gonna pick her next, but she she won't, so rude, you're up. No.
Vote in sections, right?
Yes.
So, Jesse Lane and Farms Road. Are being recommended for acceptance. Now, they're both. Roads have been uh inspected and approved by the town engineer. Uh, Jesse Lane, we have the bond in place, and the Rylars in hand. Um, resolutions have been drawn up by the town attorney's office. We're following standard procedure. Check and all the options, in your pack, I think a separate handout, you received the um. Draft resolutions that were prepared by Brian McCann, American back.
Here, you're eating that delicious, it's a lot of cake. The one in here is a lot shorter.
There's some word, right?
Yeah.
There were a couple of corrections that you guys had circulated by email, I thought the one in the the last resolution, where were the others?
What were they, because?
Uh, selectmen should be plural, not singular.
Okay.
Um, and the and the resolved, what were the other ones?
Well, and the one we received by email, Jesse Lane was spelled with an E, just J E S S.
Yeah, we corrected that.
Okay.
The other one I found has been corrected here, it said bet it at the end of the fourth whereas, but now it said be it. That's correct.
Correct.
But it does have the resolved board of selectmen.
Yeah.
That's fine, we can, um, if you approve it with that, subscribers are. So so, uh, did you have any concerns about uh either Jesse Lane or Farms Road? All good?
Can I just ask about Jesse Lane?
Sure, sure, I can.
Um, what I mean is, can I ask you, Joe, about Jesse Lane?
Sure.
I drove them both today, let's just get a look at them, and I'm wondering, when was Jesse Lane paved and when do you think it's gonna need it again?
Jesse Lane was paved top coated two.
And you've seen, like, the seam down the middle of the crown is is separated. So I'm wondering, like, how long before that has to be fixed?
The bad cold joint when they did it, cuz paper's not big enough to do the whole, they had a smaller company do it, so it was big enough to do the whole road. It it should be fine, I mean, it it's been like that since they did it almost two years ago. So, Len wasn't too concerned about it, we did some core testing and. You know, that they've. They've done everything we've asked them to do as far as, you know, pavement, cuz.
Okay.
We thought it was a little. Questionable.
The grades in particular, right?
Yeah. But Len approved the the.
Yeah, I love. Dirt left where it was pawning, I mean, everything looked like it was draining, that was my only concern was that.
Yeah. This sometimes happens.
Is there a maintenance item that we would do on that before it all comes apart or?
Yeah. Once a crack up. Big bigger, big enough, then we'll crack seal it with the rubber. And then, you know, it that usually holds them up, if you ever wanna take a ride. If you go. Through my neighborhood, it looks like someone threw crack seal or up, cuz we went crazy one year. And it's been almost six years in the road, stopped doing that, you know, even up in the winter. So the the crack ceiling works. It's just on the top two inches, the bottom one was solid.
Okay.
So. And we have a one-year maintenance fund, so if we don't like it in a year, we can take his money and mill it up and.
That's my other thing, I was happy to see that we're we're sure of bonds.
Yes, uh, you know, I mean, we we can't fix all of the problems retrospectively, but we can prospectively and and we're on it, we're not gonna get. The going forward, we will not make any of the mistakes that have been made in the past, that's not to say that we might not still get bitten by some of the mistakes in the past.
I hear you.
Um, so planning is definitely the role of theirs. Retention of bonds and everything, it's.
And the new permitting tool we apply will help track that as it comes to, that's one of the.
That's gonna be key, yeah. Was that, that's my only question, everything else looked good to me.
Anybody else? So we have the resolutions, who would like to take a crack at them?
But, this one. You gotta read the whole thing, huh?
Yeah.
Draft resolution, actually, is Resolution of the Board of Selectmen, uh, April sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the pursuant to C G S thirteen A dash forty-eight, the town may accept. As a public highway, any proposed highway situated in the municipality provided by the town meeting. Provided the town meeting has approved the acceptance of said public highways, whereas on. April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the East Windsor Town Meet, oh wait, no, we don't have a town meeting, so on a future date. Town meeting. Yeah, this is not.
The date now runs, but the January twenty.
Yeah, I think we have to change that.
Yeah, it's the the East Windsor Town Meeting should be the Board of Selectmen. Cuz this needs to go to a town meeting.
We'll start over.
Yeah, Brian's got this written, uh, it's inverted. Um, so where wherever it says town meeting, it should be Board of Selectmen, or wherever it says Board of Selectmen, it should be town meeting.
Except for the first one, which is quoting the statute.
Right.
Okay, I don't think that's changing the notes. Just that one, agreed? Should've kept draft in. Now this is fine. Jesse Lane.
That's January twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
For you.
It has to, so. The eight twenty-four rule was made by planning and zoning to possibly not need to send it out to a town meeting, so that's what the result is for.
Yeah, so in Jesse Lane, we're gonna take out January and. Us and say select.
Well, this result says that we're.
The town meeting is judged by a charter of the county, that's all.
So that's what that that result is. I'm missing, okay, so this is here.
Right.
Did you have any changes to Farm Road besides the? Part I read?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna start over, Resolution of the Board of Selectmen of April sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas pursuant to C G S thirteen A dash forty-eight, the town may accept as a public highway, any proposed. Highway situated in the municipality, provided the town meeting has approved the acceptance of said public highway. Whereas on April sixth, two thousand twenty-three. The East Windsor Board of Selectmen has approved the acceptance of Farms Road as a public highway. Whereas on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the property owner has offered Farms Road as a public road. And the Planning and Zoning Commission has voted in favor of road acceptance upon a finding that the road is in conformance with the street design criteria. Of section six dot one of the East Windsor subdivision regulations. Whereas the town engineer. Regular Public Works has overseen the calling of a certain performance bond to ensure roadway improvement. Has ensured that all improvements, including but not limited to road standards, subsurface stormwater drainage structures, structures. Grading and related easements have been adequately completed as shown on an as-built plan prepared by J R Russo Surveyors and Engineers. Dated October twenty-two thousand twenty-two, now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Selectmen for the town of East Windsor pursuant to the above referenced authority granted to us through statute and resolution of town meeting. Based upon the review and recommendations of the above reference reference commission and public officials hereby approve Farms Road. As a public highway of the town, which shall hereafter be used by the public for all lawful purposes and maintained, repaired and improved. By the town of East Windsor.
Nope.
Thank you. Now you get it.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, it should be that we we hereby uh accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommend to the town meeting their acceptance. Of Farms Road as a public highway. Because they're the ones that do it, we don't do it. Whatever.
Where's that gonna go, the the last paragraph?
Yeah, uh. Hereby accept. The recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And forward to the town meeting. For their consideration. The acceptance of Farms Road as a public highway of the town.
Hey, it's almost like stenography.
Doesn't do it as well as you though, Megan.
Yeah, except the recommendation of the planning and zoning and forward mission and forward to town meeting for their consideration.
The acceptance of.
For, yeah, their consideration, the. Uh, yeah, I don't know what that says, the acceptance of.
Farms Road.
Farms Road. Town. As a public highway. Do I need to read the whole thing again?
I wanna tell you, yes, but probably not.
That's why I'm asking, probably not. Um, so I'm making a ma- a motion here, right?
Yes.
So I'd like to amend my motion, uh, and keep the first. Uh.
Just read the resolve.
And re- and a re-read resolved, yeah, resolved, the Board of Selectmen. Yeah, for the town of. Yeah, for the town of East, where pursuant to the above referenced authority granted to us through statute and resolution of town meeting, based upon a review and recommendation, recommendations of the above reference Commission and public officials hereby uh, forward to, uh, wait, no, I've got this.
Accept the recommendation.
Accept the recommendation and forward to the planning and zoning.
Nope. For the town meeting.
Well, I have P and Z in here.
That's a recommendation.
Forward to town meeting for their consideration and acceptance of the Farms Road as a public highway.
Second.
That's daring.
All in favor?
I.
Could not ever criticize anybody's minutes.
Do you ever hear me care, Peg? Never.
Oh, you wanna try again?
I'm gonna read this. Yeah, same thing here, resolved hereby. Let me just read my notes. Accept the recommendation and forward to town meeting for their consideration of the acceptance of Jesse Lane as a public highway. We'll get to that in a minute. Uh, what about the rest of it? I think the rest of it's good. Okay, resolution of the Board of Selectmen, April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, whereas pursuant to Connecticut general statutes thirteen A dash forty-eight, the town may accept as a public highway, any proposed highway situated in the municipality, provided the town meeting has approved the acceptance of said public highway. Whereas on April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, East Windsor Board of Selectmen has approved the acceptance of Jesse Lane as a public highway. Whereas on January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three, the property owner has offered Jesse Lane as a public road, and the Planning and Zoning Commission has voted in favor of road acceptance on a finding that the road is in conformance with the street design criteria of section section six dot one of the East Windsor subdivision regulations. Whereas the town engineer slash director of public works has ensured that all improvements, including but not limited to road standards, subsurface stormwater drainage drainage structures, grading, and related easements have been adequately completed and are in substantial conformance with the town and accepted engineering standards, as shown on an improvement location plan prepared by F.A. Hesketh and Associates Incorporated, as amended January thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Now therefore be it resolved, Board of Select for the town of East Windsor pursuant to the above referenced authority granted to statute and resolution of town meeting based upon the review and recommendations of the above reference Commission and public officials hereby accept the recommendation and forward to town meeting for the consideration and acceptance of Jesse Lane as a public highway.
Very good.
Not bad. It only took six tries.
Second.
Votes are made in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I.
Opposed? Ruth, does that, uh, round out your your list tonight? All right, cool. Um, can we take up agenda item nine K in consideration for Ms. Collins?
Yeah. Sorry about that.
No, I don't mind.
I'm moved to take up, um, agenda item nine K.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Linda, you're up.
Right, so, good evening, everybody. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the East Windsor Housing Authority to ask the Board of Selectmen for your support with applying for funds through the Community Development Block Program. This is also known as the CDT. Uh, two million dollars would be available to provide upgrades to Park Hill should an application be submitted and approved. The proposed upgrades include replacing the deteriorating and damaged aluminum siding on all fourteen of the apartment buildings. The siding is at least thirty years old. Replacing the old insulation with tighter ground would also be installed for emergency, emergency, I'm sorry, energy efficient purposes as well. In addition, each of our eighty-four units have at least one HVAC wall unit, also known as mini splits, which is their primary source for heat and air conditioning. These were installed eleven years ago. A total of a hundred and ten wall units would need to be replaced. This number includes an additional wall unit for our twenty-six one-bedroom units as well. The life expectancy of these older models is twelve years. Who in the past year, we had been incurring significant expenses for repairs and replacing four HVAC units at the cost of six thousand dollars each. The life expectancy of the newer models is fifteen years, and they are more efficient, which is a huge plus for our residents because they pay for their own utilities. Another CDBG project we would like to consider, depending on funding availability, is to upgrade three of our eight accessible units that are currently considered adaptable to be fully accessible. So to take those three adaptable units, bring them to the full compliance for ADA acceptance. I was recently informed about a week ago, that there are additional state funds available from the Department of Housing that would be considered for CBPG approved projects would be a combination of the CBDG and this new funding through the Department of Housing. If we were eligible, it would be four million dollars for a total of six million dollars. Park Hill is not subsidized by state or federal funds. Our operating budget is based on rental income. And we try to keep the rents affordable and we service and target the low and moderate income populations. Major capital improvements have been possible with the availability of grants such as the CDBG program that is actually awarded to the municipality. The housing authority is the sub recipient. With your help over the years, we have received over one million dollars. Most projects include the fire alarm system, modifying the laundry rooms with accessibility features, replace the community hall generator, and most recently converting fifty tubs to ATA showers. I'm asking for your support to help us apply for this funding for these crucial projects to benefit the residents. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So there is a quick turnaround, um, on the application. Needs to be, uh, we need to, help me out with this. I'm gonna get the details wrong here, Linda, but we need to have the consultant in place to do the application by the end of the month. Is that correct? Okay, um, so that would, once you guys give the green light, that would also mean that we have to put out a bid solicitation for um, somebody who might submit that. Um, we have had conversations with the gentleman who who managed the last one, and he's interested in doing it again, so I'm confident that we would have an applicant. Um, but there's some left foot, right foot stuff that we need to do in terms of getting to um, that end of the month deadline. So, uh, if you guys want to move forward, on Monday, we'll post the the bid notification for for closing and an opening on April nineteenth. And then, uh, this board could, uh, review the applicants and make the awards on the twentieth so that we can get the submission into the state by, um, by the end of the month. That's kind of the tick tock as far as I I understand. Is there anything you want to add to that?
No, that's better.
And and over time, I'm I'm glad Joe's here too. Over time, we've had, um, Park Hill has been the recipient of some CDBG grants. The town has been the recipient recipient of some, um, and we kind of have alternated it back and forth, but we have a lot on our plate right now, and they have some projects that are actionable. Um, so I thought that was probably a worthwhile thing to keep the money flowing over there if they're, if we do get.
Just for clarification, you said you're actually going to, if you get grant money, you'll remove the existing, um, siding and you're gonna replace the installation?
Yes.
Also.
Mm-hmm.
Are you gonna, I'm just throwing it out there because that last end apartment that we talk about quite frequently, um, the rise in electric bill there, um, is, can you make sure that when they do that, they do the end apartments much better than the inside apartments in this way, some of that cost? Go down with that.
So what I'm looking for with you guys is really an authorization for us to to post the RFP so we can have a back there for award on the twentieth. I don't I don't need a vote. I just, you know, affirmation or discussion or whatever. It's gonna be just.
Absolutely, I I in agreement, they have done an excellent job. I bet Park Hill created up to some type of good standards because of all, I'm gonna say it outright, but I'm not gonna go up previous to that administration um, to bring everything into standard. This will just take care of a lot of the problems that, um, they'll never be able to afford to do based upon how the run structures are, um, and say solvent. Um, so, yeah, I'm all for for that project. That's probably at this time the best use um, of federal dollars, um. Because like Jason said, we got a lot of stuff going on right now on this side, so put it to where it needs to go.
Thank you.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, great.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, now the housing one, that you guys handle that one, or does that go through? This one was also.
That's housing one, state. CHF.
State. My, it, I actually had a conversation with our asset manager today, Sancho Banks, and she had explained it a little bit more. And she said, um, it's 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 all inclusive.
It's all inclusive.
Yeah, so it would be a combined.
I just wanted to make sure that we're gonna have two parties fighting.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Uh, any interest of staying on? Well, actually, can we table, uh, E and go to S, G, and H? That would be Melissa's, anything pertaining to her, although I'm not sure that, well, let's do that. Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, um, so nine F is a discussion of the Dillinger Rad Agreement. Do you want to speak to this, or do you want me to speak to this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, as you guys know, um, we are trying to to reestablish Youth Service Bureau. Um, Melissa had had something going for a little while, and it got lateral, or PD that didn't work out quite the way anybody wanted it to, but what, um, I asked the police department to do before giving it back to Melissa is making sure they make sure they gave it back to us fixed. Um, and so one of the things that they are requiring, they being DCF, is requiring as, um, is certain reporting obligations. Dillinger Rad is a vendor through DCF that will help youth service bureaus in Connecticut to aggregate and manage the data that needs to be reported to the state. Initially, there were a lot of, uh, there was a lot of chatter amongst youth service bureaus about their reluctance to use Dillinger Rad because what if we don't collect this? How do you provide for confidentiality about that? You know, there were, there were a lot of, there was a lot of trepidation. Um, we've been in two meetings so far, uh, one directly with the representative from Dillinger Rad, who runs a youth service bureau down in Madison, I think, Clinton or one of those towns down there. Um, and one was a a more general conversation about the software that Dillinger Rad is putting forward. And it's basically a souped-up Google Sheets, or Google Docs. Um, the concern around the aggregation of data that we may not have access to on the town side, um, privacy information or that kind of, that kind of thing that would be housed in the school, that one of the points that they made is that if you don't have it, you don't have to give it to us. Um, and that that went a long way towards alleviating some concerns. The usability of the Google Form software package that, uh, Dillinger Rad is using, I think, allayed some concerns, um. Either way, we're going to need to provide the data to DCF. The question is, do we, do we need to manage the data? Or will we use Dillinger Rad to manage the data? What's least burdened for this? Um, did I cover all the points relevant here?
Yes.
Any questions or comments on this?
So are we gonna do the?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I I.
We're gonna provide the information to Dillinger, right?
Yeah, so currently we fill out Excel spreadsheets and then submit them to DCF based on what their deadlines are.
Yep.
This would be a place for us to house the data as we do the programs. And then it's just immediately accessible for Dillinger Rad and DCF too.
And then they'll forward it from there.
Melissa was able to manage, or Melissa and her team were able to manage all of the COVID vaccine clinics that we did utilizing Google Spreadsheets. I have no concerns at all about their ability to to utilize this for what is, I think, gonna be a much less burdensome, uh, reporting tool than that was. Um, Matt Carl is on board with using Dillinger Rad, Amy's on board with using Dillinger Rad. Melissa can speak for herself. I'm comfortable with it. Um, so those initial concerns, once we learn a little bit more about them, we're we're pretty much put aside.
Is if they don't get funding, then which ends, and then there's no cost to it.
Right, we just go back to using our spreadsheet that we invented.
I don't have problems.
And we'll continue to retain the data on top of that.
Right.
You know, we eat it into the, you know, the software. So if the software stops, we still have the data.
So you need to sign as the.
Yeah.
Oh, we go for it.
Looking at you. Uh, make a motion to, uh, authorize the First Selectment to sign the Dillinger Research Applied Data Expanded Youth Service Bureau Data Sharing Agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay. Um, nine G, discussion of the regional microtransit grant. This one I probably, I'm gonna need some help from Melissa on. So we were approached by the town of Tolland, um, about doing a regional application for a grant, uh, opportunity or funding opportunity through the Department of Transportation that would expand transportation access, uh, without restrictions for age or disability within the community. It's a partnership with Ace Taxi, um, but one of the components of the document, uh, uh, there's a couple of them, um. So the purpose is to expand transportation access into rural areas, and and we fall under that jurisdiction. The other towns that I recall that were participating were Holland, Coventry, Summers, uh, Ellington, Vernon, East Windsor, Stafford. Um, so it really is a, a it'll be a pretty powerful application with all those towns participating if they all decide to. Those are the folks that were on the Zoom call, whatever that was, Monday or last week or something. Um, so one of the the key points here is that in order to have this benefit uh, residents in our community who are looking to go to other communities, that other community needs to be participating as well, which is why they're trying to make their service area as broad as possible. Um, so for example, if the town of Vernon were not participating, the, uh, residents in East Windsor need to be able to access the program to go to a doctor's office in Vernon. Um, but if Vernon is participating, then then we can access that. Um, we need to provide, uh, letters of support both from the municipal CEO and from the Human Services Director or Arce Community Services Director, uh, by April fourteenth. Um, and then their their plan, assuming that they get funded, is to set up kind of a governance board with one person from each participating municipality to kind of troubleshoot issues that may arise. Sorry. Any questions or comments on this?
No, I think I'm gonna have a great time because, uh, we know we're not gonna get what service coming through town. My only concern was before you mentioned all the other towns, that it didn't make any sense to collaborate with Tolland when we have towns in between, um, because we're not gonna get service, but it's like they're all.
Well, we found that point ready to give more credit due to Tolland, recognizing that they don't have much in the way of commercial activity to support for their residents. So it's in their interest to build out the participants as much as are as are they, but you know, I mean, this actually could be a great way of providing transportation from, um, excuse me. Sorry.
Now, do we know how much is reporting? And we've gone into all the reporting, but it's a pilot program.
The town of Tolland is gonna be the applicant.
They're gonna be applicants, so they'll be responsible.
They might try and engage us or or other participants as well, but.
Well, you need some like consentors to go ahead and.
Uh, yeah, just, I I, if I'm gonna submit a letter of of signing us up for something, I I'd really like to just have your your feedback on that at least prior to submission.
I agree with Marie. I think it's a great thing, especially with all the other towns in the area, hopefully on board too. I agree with Marie. I think it's a great thing, especially with all the other towns in the area, hopefully on board too. Good thing.
Okay, then um we'll put a couple of letters together and we'll submit those by the the fourteen. Melissa, do you uh know much about the natural opioids settlement?
Uh, some.
Okay, I I've got a little bit too. I'm hoping you might be able to provide some color here where where I miss. Um, so there are a couple of opioid settlements nationally. Uh, the state of Connecticut is participating uh or is an eligible state in uh the one that's included in your. Uh, packet tonight, and the city of Waterbury is really spearheading. The engagement of municipalities into this program. We need to opt in by uh April eighteenth. Um, they have been blowing up my phone and and the finance director's phone and probably uh Melissa's phone as well, like daily. Uh, for the last couple of weeks to ensure that we are aware of the opportunity and we're participating. I wanna say in the previous allotment era of. Dispersion of funds that we got, it was like sixty six hundred dollars. And that, did that go to you or the PD?
PD.
Okay. Um, so this is, it's our piece of the the drug settlements, it's an opportunity for us to kind of put that back to, you know, some local. Benefit, um, but we need to to enroll in it and it does require signature of a contract, so I wanted to. Um. Or signature of our intent to participate, it's not really a contract. I wanted to bring that to you guys and get your feedback or find.
I'm gonna take over.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, there's, it's a crisis and if we can do something at municipal level. Or is it would be programs and things of that nature and awareness and I think it's.
I wanna say they use it for Narcan.
Yeah, so we're gonna be able to um partner with our health district as well because they're getting a piece of them. High as well and doing um Narcan and KBR training, so we're gonna be hosting some Narcan and KBR trainings and Narcan distribution. Um, out in the parks this summer, so this will allow us to expand upon giving that stuff to.
So can I have a motion to authorize my signature in our. Application for participation?
I make a motion to authorize the first electment signature on the national opioid. Uh, for our intention to participate in the national opioid settlement.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Um, kind of going back to the call, the normal call, the order, um, nine E. Um, so. We've had conversations, I can't remember if it was after the screening of the applicants or if it was at our selection meeting last, but. Um, we had talked about the benefit of having the um. Executive recruitment person here on site for the two day interview process we're gonna do with the finalists for the chief of police position. Um, that was not something that was included as part of our original contract. Um, but as we've talked about with Thomas. Um, it is the best way of making sure that we can incorporate. The feedback that we could be receiving from department heads, police department employees and the general public in the decision-making process. And there really isn't a way of incorporating that feedback without him physically here. Um, so I, at your request, I asked them to give us an amendment to their const, their contract. That will facilitate Doug being here in person. It's very modest, um, it's. Uh, the cost of his travel expenses of. Two nights at a hotel or one night at a hotel?
Like two and a half days.
Two nights at a hotel and very reasonable per DM rate for for meals and travel expenses. Um, the other piece of that of this would be the DISC management assessments, those are the personality tests for the applicants. We know that we can expect to have three, probably maybe four uh finalists that are in that mix, so. You take that one seventy five and multiply it accordingly, it's less than six hundred bucks.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Now, what wasn't that included in the original flat rate?
Well, at the, at the time that we had actually got the contract in place, we talked about doing kind of a hybrid or or virtual solicitation model. Um, I think it's just better to do it in person. I think we'll get a more thorough.
Well, I have no problem doing it in person, but I'm talking about the cost of a hundred and seventy five per candidate.
It, it was an, it was just something that we didn't, wouldn't ask for.
I don't have a problem with it. I, we requested and we want them out. That's a very mountain person, um. So, and you're right, the cost, you know, for perfect, they're in the mileage, um. I'm assuming that's mileage from airport to hotel, hotel to here.
Yeah.
And not mileage from here to another job down the other end of the state.
Yes.
Okay, throwing it off there.
So if there's no further discussion, could I have your uh approval to sign the limited contract?
Uh, making a uh motion to. Um, authorize the first electment to sign the amendment to the strategic government resources contract.
Second.
Making me work.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Um, all right, nine I, discussion of Connecticut General Statutes one dash two oh six B five and an update on the freedom of information requests. So, um, in the recent run up to the community center votes, there were quite a few allegations that were suggested about. Our our reticence to hand over uh public documents, uh one requested, and I just wanted to, um. Point out to you guys, really, that that is not the case. That, um, we have been as responsive as we can, but some of these, some of these requests are outrageous, and I wanna, I wanna just. Point out a couple of them. Um. I'm gonna omit the relevant details to the freedom of information request, but this gives you a sense of what, what we're dealing with, and when, when these come in. They don't jam Mia. They jam up Melissa and Jennifer, they jam up the treasurer's office, they jam up the building department, the. Planning department, community services, public works, the police department. It's jamming up all of town government and having a really. Uh detrimental effect on morale in in the organization, and you guys need to know that. So here is a request, um, that request, this is from uh Lynn Stanley, and it says, all personnel documents. Electronic communication, correspondence, union correspondence, emails from community members. Union grievances, telephone conversations. All meeting dates and times discussing uh any employee reprimands, discipline, trainings, letters of discipline, addendums. In-person conversations, all sort of select me discussions and legal opinions related to or concerning the particular department in question. Uh, over a six-month period. All.
What particular party?
It was pertaining to the building department.
Oh, okay.
Um, but all, and over a six-month period of a ninety employee organization. How are we supposed to do that in a reasonable way? Here's another one. From the same applicant. Um, all documents, requests for proposals, estimates, invoices, bids or legal opinions related to the town of East Windsor proposed community center project. All correspondence, communications, including emails, mailings, newspaper articles, social media posts, robocalls. And other electronic communication and documents related to or concerning the proposed community center referenced in the November eighth referendum question. Please include the amount of time and money employees spent working on this project such as employee meetings, town meetings. Date and time of meetings and discussions, meetings and discussions with the scout hall board of directors or members. All presentations and discussions, telephone calls, robocalls, video preparation and presentations. Door-to-door campaigning and compensatory time for employees for the town of East Windsor uh pertaining to question two. That is unanswerable. We don't catalog employee time based on projects. We don't report employees' phone calls. It isn't, it, these things are, I mean, the the general statute says that, um, there's a. Bar to be set for vexatious requests. These are designed to tie us in knots. Um, and here I have, these are the frame of information requests that have been submitted by just three people. Uh, this fiscal year, just this fiscal year. Um, one of these is three thousand two hundred and nineteen pages. The requester never came to get it. One of them is fourteen hundred pages, and I'm actually gonna go through and show you point by point what we're dealing with. Because I want you guys to know, I am doing the best I can to manage this, and but not at the expense of shutting down aspects of the government. This pile here. This entire pile here, and this is, this is a greenwood paper, five hundred pages. This stack right here, never came to pick it up. This piece right here, that is, I'm gonna guess. Two thousand pages, I think, conservatively. They took eleven pages. What else? This right here, this pile, this is another thousand pages, sixty seven of them were taken. I'm, we're, we're at a real crossing grounds here. I'm, I'm not even sure where this one is. I mean, you can see, you can see what it is we're dealing with here, so the statutes have uh a. Provision that that allows for vexatious abuses of the general statutes, of the Frame of Information Act. I don't know if we're at that. But we gotta be close, um. So the statute specifically says that. Notwithstanding any of the provisions of this section, a public agency may petition the commission for relief for a requester for the public agency. If the um, if the public agency alleges it's a vexatious requester. The agency shall detail and cut and conduct which the agency alleged, I'm sorry. Such petitions shall be sworn under penalty of a false statement as provided in in section fifty-three A ones, one fifty-seven B. And shall detail the conduct with the age which the agency alleges demonstrates a vexatious history of requests, including but not limited to. The number of requests filed and the total number of pending requests. Probably don't cross that threshold. The scope of the requests, the the overly broad, overly vague requests which are debilitating to the operation of the government. I think there's an argument there. The nature and content, language or subject matter of the requests. There have been some disrespectful emails exchanged, but I won't disclose those at the time being. Um, and they have not been towards me, they've been towards uh professional staff. Um, the nature, content, language or subject matter of other oral and written communications to the agency from the requester, that's another one of those points I'm talking about. Um, it basically alleging that um employers are being forced to sign documents they didn't write. Um, a pattern of conduct that amounts to an abuse of the right to access information under the FOIA. Or an interference with the operation of the agency. These are only the responsive documents. So anytime that we get one of these, we have to go through absolutely everything. And then it needs to be reviewed for anything that's attorney-client privileged, anything that's actually not responsive based on the nature of the request. It needs to be to be reviewed by the town attorney and then it needs to be disseminated. It is an onerous process. I I don't know what, if any steps we take at this point in time, but I just want the four of you to know that that we do take the Frame of Information Act seriously. But it's being abused to the point where it is, it is affecting morale and it is certainly affecting productivity of your employees. You should know that.
So, just a ballpark with the staff time and the lawyer's time, which is never free. What do you think just that right there costs taxpayers?
I don't know, I can tell you, we've spent more than ten thousand dollars in legal fees on this.
So, these requests that.
And that's, that's through January.
Are not picked up, obviously, because they're sitting here, cost us. Easily more than ten thousand, probably more like twenty thousand dollars of taxpayer money.
We, we are burning through legal dollars because of vexatious requests.
And requests for things like newspaper articles, which are available to everyone and anyone. How is that our responsibility to provide something like that?
If we have it and we know it's publicly available someplace else, we can point to, you can get it on the website. Search Facebook, we're not searching Facebook for you, but if there's an email that had it. And we have the email, we need to review it, we need to make sure that it's uh passed through legal, if it's responsive. Then there's a question of whether or not we have to turn that over if it's all otherwise available, but I have it in my email.
So I, I find it kind of rich that somebody might complain about a five thousand dollar referendum to decide a multimillion dollar project, but then turn around. And potentially vexatiously um cost the town ten or twenty thousand dollars in. Work that's not adding to the bottom line and is not being used by the requester.
So I don't know if that, if we've hit that standard, but you guys should know that we, we've gotta be coming close.
Sounds like it.
So. Please, I haven't from anybody found a, a, a valid piece of information we've lost, any information we've lost, as long as it doesn't. Sit on the desk, um. I just wanna make sure that whatever is being done is being done according to law. We're getting back to them and written, uh. Dating or receipt of your freedom of admission, we are working on it. Soon as we get done, we'll give it to you, um, but. Not to get into the, the topic here, but. To call and say they want something that's new time and say I'll be in before the end of the.
Oh, that, that came in at three.
Okay, it came in at three and wanted it at four, um. And then be upset because it's not ready, um.
That, that one.
That is being just done to agitate, in my opinion.
That, that particular one attached there, the fourteen hundred page one that we were given an hour to produce is this.
Yeah.
That one with the elastic band on.
But to me, that, that's quick to me, based upon what I'm reading here, that to me clearly. Validates that we're either on it or close to being on it where we can do something, and I would recommend that you contact the town attorney. And get his opinion to see, see where we go from here, um. I, I don't mind producing that paperwork, if that paperwork is going to be reviewed by somebody, but if that paperwork is just gonna sit here. And we're wasting taxpayer dollars, I got a major problem. Regardless of who it is.
I agree with everything that's been said, I mean, to spend a ballpark figure of about twenty grand so far to taxpayer funds. It's just unacceptable and the time that staff is preparing it, the paper, and then to have them take no pages or or just. Because they don't see what they're looking for, or for whatever reason, it, that's, I don't, it's not okay.
And I do wanna just reiterate, it's not me that's getting jammed up, it's everybody else that works. So, I just wanted to address that. So you guys know where I'm coming from, what we're trying to manage and, you know, the other good things that we're trying to get done while dealing with this stuff. Um.
It's too bad they're putting staff through that when staff could be doing stuff that adds to the bottom line for the town of East Windsor. I mean, it's one thing if you, if there's information that is legitimately needed, uh, but just obviously. Just trying to make busy work, it looks like to me, from the evidence that's sitting right there in front of me, that's, that doesn't make any sense.
So.
And there is no statute that says you can guide us to our website on the minutes of meetings for the information?
We can, as long as we don't have the document in another form.
Uh, because we have hard copies of stuff, we have to provide the hard copy.
Yeah.
Getting rid of all my stuff.
So, I just wanted you guys to know.
Well, my feeling is we're, it's just going to continue because there's obviously a track record of it, so I mean, I do agree with Marie that maybe. We should contact the town attorney to see. If we're at that point.
Agreed, and, you know, based on what this says. Then we start telling people with this record, no, you have to narrow your search down to. Specific, be more specific, you can't send us such a broad. You know. Does this specifically says? Scope of request. And. In reading some of those requests you listed, there, the scope is just outrageous.
I'll talk to the town attorney. Discussion of tax refunds.
Move to approve the tax refunds totaling six hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Post? Slidewalk reports, so I didn't have an opportunity to type mine up, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna wing it up a notes. Um, on March twenty-ninth, we had um. Retired Navy SEAL and retired parlay judge Tim Keeney, uh, now currently the first selectman in town of Summers, come to. The Senior Center and give his presentation on his experiences as a Navy SEAL and as a. Uh, participant in the Apollo seventeen dive rescue team. Um, uh, Judge Keeney spoke with us for. Over an hour, right, probably closer to an hour and a half. Um, his presentation was fantastic. Um, but do you still have the, the, the video?
Yeah.
So if anybody wants a copy of the, the video of his presentation, it's about thirty-five minutes. Um, and we can uh, get you access to that, but I really appreciated um, for Selectman Keeney's time uh, to come and share his experience with us. I think everybody had a great time. Um, there were probably seventy people or so there, sixty, seventy people. Um, and there were a lot of new faces that, that were just interested in hearing his experience, so it was really, uh, it was a great time.
We're very good at that.
He did make note of the fact that we need a bigger space, we'll have, we'll have to look into that. Um, on March thirtieth, um. Uh, Joe Sauerhoffer, Len Norton and I met with Superintendent Tudren. Um, their, their facilities director and the athletic director to kind of touch base on. Where we stand with grounds maintenance on the schools and to provide some guidance for them as they start getting things ready for the spring sports season. Um, on April first, uh, I was very delighted to join uh, for people with, at the uh. Easter Bunny Breakfast at the Broadwood Fire Department. Um, my kids took over the joint like they own the place, but we all had a really, really good time. Um, and then I went solo to the Easter Bunny Breakfast at the Warehouse Point Fire Department. Um, I didn't, well, I didn't go solo, I had breakfast with Charlie, but I went without kids. Um. On March third, Melissa, Amy, Matt Carl and I participated in the Dill Durant. Webinar, to get a sense of that, which we talked about tonight. Um, we also, Amy, Melissa and I also participated in the Micro Transit Pilot Program. Um, and then Matt, Roger and Amy and I had a discussion on where things stand with the. Uh, replacement of the radio, and we should have some forward momentum on that pretty soon. Uh, Marcus Communications has been working pretty diligently with us to find uh, the most economic. Uh, solution to, to that as we move forward and um, we're gonna have a. Basically an emergency management meeting in the next couple of weeks to catch everybody up on where, where we are right now and what's coming next um. On April fifth, yesterday, I had coffee at the Senior Center, which is always a fun time. Maria's joined me a couple of times, but if you guys. Ever have the opportunity and wanna swing by, uh, it is, it's just cool to um, listen to what they have to say. And then last night. Board of Finance finalized their budget recommendation, uh, which if approved by voters would result in a mil rate decrease of one-tenth of a mil. Uh, which I think, you know, is, is great considering the circumstances uh, this year. Uh, coming up on April thirteenth. The softball field, East Windsor High School is gonna be dedicated to Karen Drake, a longtime uh, softball coach and teacher in the school system. Um, who I've known since I think I was four. Um, but you know, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a very appropriate dedication for somebody who's made a tremendous contribution, so if you're able to come, that's at three o'clock. Three thirty, it's at three thirty, I, I, I said three thirty. That's all I have, right? That's next Thursday.
Friday, right?
Yeah, I, um. Uh, Economic Development Commission is canceled, um, so I didn't have that meeting. The only meeting that I had, um. Not in, and, um, was the Water Protection Control Authority, um, and I'm not able to attend that meeting again this month. Um, because of the dates, um, I apologize. You all, um, but like, you know, the way sometimes, um, I really don't have anything to report. Um, but I will tie up with them at some point when I get back from the vacation, um. And give a updated report of the last couple of months.
Thanks.
I'm going to thank you. Was a failure that I don't have many people over right now.
You're allowed to go on vacation. Sarah.
I really don't have anything to report either. I didn't have any liaison meetings with the way um, it felt, but. Next week I have one, I mean, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then following week there's more, so my next report will be very lengthy. But I hope everyone has a happy Easter and a happy Passover, and thanks to everyone who came out to vote on Tuesday.
Bro. Okay, I've got a report. On March twenty-seventh, I attended the BMX. Um, they discussed plans on the golf tournament fundraiser that they're hosting on May twentieth, the Grassmere Country Club. Uh, lots of prizes and raffles, and today they announced that they actually have. A car giveaway for a hole-in-one, a twenty-twenty-three Jeep Compass. Um, they just managed to somehow get on their. Um. List of prizes, so that makes it a lot more interesting.
They don't have a longest divot contest or anything? Play Grassmere, there's only one chance to get a hole-in-one, it's number five, you can't do it on number nine.
Yeah.
Cannot do it on number nine.
I don't play golf, so. I couldn't tell you. Um, they're also planning for this year's rubber duck race and cardboard boat race um, in conjunction with AHRC. And they are also selecting more dates for bottle and can drives for the year. Uh, now. April second, the Warehouse Point Fire Department Auxiliary held their annual Easter Bunny, like Jason mentioned, um. Pancake Breakfast was a big success, there was lots of people there. And the Auxiliary would like to thank all the volunteers and people who participated in that. On April third, I attended the Warehouse Point Fire District Commissioners Meeting. Uh, they set a public hearing date of April seventeenth for a budget and charter adoption hearing. Um, that will take place at seven PM at Station One. Uh, the fire chief reported the department receiving fifty-eight calls for service during the month of March. And the chief also reported an increase in participation in training drills and that they are still seeking volunteer members. And the fire marshal conducted thirty inspections during the month of March.
I forgot to mention that.
And that as well, the flower and plant sale, um, they're having, starting tomorrow. Starting tomorrow and um, that'll go through until they sell out on Sunday.
Just update, you can repeat the date for when they're going to do their budget in their uh.
The hearing, yeah, the hearing, the public hearing date is the seventeenth. Um, it's a, it's just a public hearing, the budget and for the charter. Um, where they can, you know, take questions and. And present the budget.
What time?
Seven PM, thanks. Okay, so it's all land use for me, um. Planning and zoning had a little bit more work than they have had for the last couple of meetings. They uh. Postponed a bond reduction request for West Farms and then approved a bond release. Uh, for the pit, for Shaver of the pit. So, um, I know that's stuff that we've been kind of keeping an eye on. They had the. Two modifications, site plan modifications for Newbury Road, and then they also heard from the town for the lights over at Abbey Road. Soccer field, um. Still talking about the affordable housing thing and they're just gonna, uh, you might want it, I know I've told this before and then nothing happened. Last time we were all there, but um, there's a. I think they're having a public uh, question period, I think it's, it's on this. Tuesdays, uh, planning and zoning for the affordable housing uh, plan, so you might wanna take a look at that. Um, I also went to the, dragged my whole family to the pancake breakfast at Warehouse Point, that was nice.
You dragged, you dragged your whole family?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, yeah, uh.
Uh, and the girls all took advantage of the uh, all-you-can-eat aspect of it, so. Got my money's worth. Um, Wetlands last night, uh. We, we were talking about the Asabright determination for um, Farm and Town, which was kind of a, a complex. Uh, discussion that went over a couple of months, but we did find a compromise with that and, and uh. So we, you know, I think we, nobody was a hundred percent happy, but I think everybody got what they needed out of that. And then we had the Board of Finance meeting that I stopped in on and, and Jason covered that, so that's all I have, but.
All right. Is there anybody from the public would like to address the board? Please state your name and address. Yes, sir, name and address. I was gonna call on anybody, whether you put your hand up or not.
While Anderson eighty-nine Main Street property. Uh, this is FOI to say. I, I. Personally think that there should be on any, any request. Any, or anyone. A rough estimate of what it's gonna take. And they should be required to put down a fundable deposit. If that is, if it costs less than it appears. But doing it absolutely free upfront, I think is a giant mistake. And that would curb. Foolish requests, I think, but. Town attorney will opine on that, which is appropriate, but still, I think that's a reasonable thing. There's just too much money sitting on the table. There's too much of my money sitting on that table.
Yeah.
So, that would be my take on that. All I have, my, other than uh. D. We did it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? I can't see over here. Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Wayne Cherry. People's Street Program, um. Yeah, I had many comments to say about the uh. Light. And uh, property maintenance, but. At train left station. Okay, uh, I think you are making a mistake. By combining light and property maintenance together. I believe there should be a light which covers most of the property maintenance automatically. Putting it in hands of zoning and. Building the spectrum is the wrong, wrong one. And I, I'm very disappointed that. Selectmen chose to go with this. There's many points in it that should be checked over even closer, many points.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Yes, sir, name and address, please, um. Change court.
Curious question again. What's gonna come to come along there?
Like, what am I gonna do with that, those stacks of stuff?
Yeah.
And I'm in a closet.
They'll just get stored somewhere forever.
Not forever, but. You know, till we purge it away.
That could be forever.
We got limited space.
How long are you required to keep that?
Well, I don't wanna recreate it, so.
No, I know, but yeah, is there, is there a certain timeframe that you have?
Those, those are in most cases, not the originals of, of, of all that, so. I mean, it exists either in email or word documents or uh, PDFs or, I mean.
So let me rephrase, how long would they have as a requestee to pick it up?
I don't think there's a.
There isn't, oh, okay. Wow, because they could, yeah, that's just great.
We have the great storage for that.
We waste, we don't have to create, I mean, it's gonna live in a closet in my office.
It's gonna grow, you know.
Oh, yeah. Anything from you guys? Yes, sir, name and address.
Tom Lancer, twenty-seven World Circle, um, we attended Captain Keeney's presentation. And actually spent a fair amount of time afterwards in the parking lot, talking to other people that attended. Everybody was excited that it was a great presentation, there were so many people there. We were talking about, now that we have the possibility at that point of a new community center. Wouldn't it be great to do more things like that? And I think it's like the first event. But um, everybody was just excited about, wow, we need to do more of these things right now. And I, I really wanna see that momentum continue. Um, I hate to go negative, but I've seen comments on a certain social media post that. There's not gonna be, gonna be anything happening at the new building, you know, nobody's gonna go there, which, you know, is. That's who they are, but um, I would just love to see a lot of things happen, new things. New events that we maybe hadn't thought of before, so. It was, it was a great presentation, I'm glad you brought it here, and I think it's a catalyst that moves forward to more things like that.
That's great suggestions for the new spot, yeah. Is there anybody online who would like to address the members in Board of Selectmen? Okay. We will have an executive session, I can have a motion to go into executive session and include just the. Five of us, there will be one vote to happen afterwards.
I'm hoping we enter into executive session at fifty-one.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You'll oppose. For an executive session at eight fifty-one. Um, so we need to add an. So we're out of executive session at nine twenty-two, um, I'd like to add an agenda item, agenda item nine L. Uh, discussion and approval of settlement authorization uh, through the Connecticut International Risk Management Agency. Uh, pertaining to a heart hypertension claim involving Jeff Reimer.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Item is added. Black and white.
I move to authorize perma-settlement authority for up to twenty-five thousand dollars. To settle and close out all future exposures of a heart and hypertension claim associated with Jeff Reimer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Uh, with no further business, come before the Board of Selectmen, the motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move that we adjourn our regular meeting at nine twenty-three?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.